Very good. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting on July 16th, 2019. All selectmen are present except for Selectman Kalenda. I know that there are people still in the hallway, too. I don't know if we can maybe see if we can make room to get everybody in. I know it's a common problem making sure there's enough room for everybody in our meetings. All right. So I'm going to start our agenda going right to our scheduled appointments. Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd just like to echo your comments. It's great to see a lot of people here. Great to see a full room. It's great to see a full room for something, you know, as wonderful as what we're about to do this evening. Selectmen, you have in your packet a recommendation from Chief Paulus. Also, my recommendation as well for the appointment of Sergeant Ryan Newell to fill the position, open position of lieutenant with the Southborough Police Department. I do want to note that I was very fortunate to be able to participate in the process. It's a great process that the department has. I think the candidates were fully vetted, and I will let the chief speak to that after the board votes. But I would ask that the board move the recommendation. We'll vote, please.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint the appointment of Ryan M. Newell as police lieutenant, an appointment of Aaron L. Rich-
Hang on, we've got to do Adam I first. So we'll just-
Okay.
So there's a motion to appoint Ryan Newell as police lieutenant.
Second.
Is there a second? It's moved, seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Chief Paulus, please.
Just wanted to say, standing up here, thanks for having us all tonight. It's a great night. I just also want to say that, looking at my department, there how proud I am of them and how conflicted I was on this process. Not because I don't have two outstanding candidates, but I had numerous outstanding candidates, and those officers that were runners-up were here tonight. And the only thing that saddened me is I didn't have more positions to put out because they were all very deserving, and I want to give the entire department a round of applause for this. So I just want to speak a little bit about Lieutenant Newell. He's a resident of Shrewsbury, Mass. He began his career as a Southborough police officer in 2002 after transferring from a four-year stint with the Nantucket Police Department. He was promoted to sergeant in 2004, and he's acquired 15 years of leadership experience. In addition, he holds a BA in criminal justice from Stonehill College. And I can just stop a moment to say that there's a lot of very qualified law enforcement leaders from Stonehill College, including the class of 1988 in particular. He also holds an MS degree from Westfield State College. Sergeant Newell has a vast background in many areas, including leading the department to the Mass Accreditation Award. At the time, we were accredited last October. We were one of only 65 municipal police departments in the state so honored, so 350 cities and towns roughly, and we were one of 65. He also runs the department's social media, public information officer, public records, and NIBRIS representative, to name a few. He's also a trilogy award recipient for his completion of the FBI Leader Executive Development Program. Sergeant Newell placed first in the competitive testing process where he was able to attain the top score in all categories, including the Assessment Center. I also want to note, in 2011, he was involved in the lieutenant's process which finished in a virtual tie, and the other candidate was chosen based on his experience. I want to commend Sergeant Newell. He bided his time. He let his work and his attitude speak for itself, and I'm very proud to be able to preside over his promotion this evening. So without further ado, if we have the town clerk to swear him in.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Ryan M. Newell.
Aye, Ryan M. Newell.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties incumbent upon me.
That I will faithfully and impartially-
Discharge.
Discharge the duties upon me.
As the police lieutenant for the town of Southborough.
As the police lieutenant for the town of Southborough.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the police department.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the police department.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the rules, regulations, and ordinances.
And under rules, regulations, and ordinances.
Bylaws of my municipal employer.
Or bylaws of my municipal employer.
And under the authority thereof of the Board of Selectmen.
And under the authority thereof of the Board of Selectmen.
So help me God.
So help me God. Hey, one more thing. I'd like to have his wife, Melissa, and the family come up to officially pin the badge up. Did you practice? What's up? All right. Next, under scheduled appointments, Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am pleased to present tonight the recommendation of the police chief in my concurrence with the appointment of Officer Aaron L. Richardson to fill the open position of sergeant within the Southborough Police Department. The choice was unanimously, unanimous concurrence of the command staff. I was, again, very pleased to participate in this process. I do want to echo the chief's comments and commend the chief. If you recall, when we hired Chief Paulus, we talked a lot about succession planning and hiring from within, and, you know, it'd be great if we didn't have to go outside again to do that. And I really think that this process has shown that we have a lot of great officers in this department, and if they, you know, weren't ready for this process, and if they weren't, you know, selected, they'll be ready for the next process. And so with that, I would ask that the board approve and ratify the recommendation of the police chief and myself.
Ms. Brascio, is there a motion?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, Aaron. I was trying to do it quicker last time. Jumped the gut a little bit. But I make a motion for the appointment of Aaron L. Richardson as police sergeant.
Motion's made. Is there a second? It was seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Congratulations.
I had to dig far, but I got a few kind words to say out. Officer Richardson started his career as an auxiliary officer with the Waltham Police Department in 2006 before moving on as a reserve officer in the town of Bedford. He also worked for the Mass Department of Corrections in Norfolk before being hired as a Southborough police officer in July of 2011. Officer Richardson also served as the department's senior center liaison officer, field training officer, dear instructor, and is assigned to the Worcester County Drug Task Force. He's also been described as a one-man community policing unit. And I will say that saying I have several of those, including Officer Kevin Landry. I don't know if he's here tonight, but I'm very lucky to have those two individuals handle a lot of the things that make the department look great, and I'm thankful of that. Officer Richardson placed first in most categories of the competitive process, including job performance, assessment, and interview, which included nine highly qualified applicants. In my career, I'd be hard-pressed to think of another candidate who has received as much positive feedback for his work in the community. I look forward to watching him grow into this leadership opportunity. So congratulations. Great job. And I'd also like to have his fiancee, Crystal, come up and pin his badge on him, and with the rest of his family.
Oh, wait, we've got to swear him in. We'll swear him in first, and then we'll do the badge. I know Crystal wants to say a few words. Is that correct? All right, we'll hold off on that.
Hi, Aaron L. Richardson.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
Discharge the duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police sergeant for the city town of Southborough.
As a police sergeant for the town of Southborough.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the police department.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the police department.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the rules, regulations, and ordinances.
And the rules, regulations, and ordinances.
Bylaws of my municipal employer.
Bylaws of my municipal employer.
And under the authority thereof of the Board of Selectmen.
And the authority thereof of the Board of Selectmen.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good. All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to move that we take a quick two-minute recess. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. We'll resume in two minutes. Thank you, Aaron. Congratulations.
All right, we are back. Wait, thank you, everybody. Terry, yeah, Terry's, Terry's good. All right, so the next, uh, next item, public comment. Is there any, uh, anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our next appointment. Mr. Malinowski, you are up.
Timing's everything. You can sit if you'd like.
How is everyone? Hope you're enjoying your, thanks for having me. Hope you're all enjoying your summers. This is hopefully your last meeting before we have a certificate of occupancy for the public safety building. Of course, if you call a special meeting, I can't control that, but I think the important things for you to know is we are still, I think Mr. Shea kind of gave a verbal update in the chair report last time that I had submitted. We're still at an August 13th substantial completion date. The key thing for the public to realize is that substantial completion means we have permission to occupy the building. Doesn't necessarily mean that the departments will be operating out of the building on that day. There are what I would characterize as four things that could jeopardize that date. Item one is we were made aware yesterday that the metal fabricators, so there are stainless steel counters in certain areas, mainly the fire department kitchen area and the booking detention area, that no one ordered. And so we've, that's clearly on the general contractor. The general contractor has offered to put in temporary countertops to get a certificate of occupancy if the stainless steel countertops do not arrive by the 13th. We are in discussions with the chiefs to make sure they understand what would or wouldn't be in there so that they can decide whether it's prudent to operate out of the building or not. My personal view is we are going to continue to push to get the certificate of occupancy and do everything we can because there's obviously a slew of inspections that have to happen to get that. So we don't want to hold up inspections for, I'll call it, a minor item that's more operational in nature, but it would be required to get occupancy. And then there's another item called VFDs, that the wrong ones arrived on site, that has to deal with a lot of the mechanical. I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to go any further than that. There is a proposed workaround that the general contractor has given to kind of help bridge the gap, but that's being reviewed by our project engineer to make sure we actually are satisfied with that. Item three is the elevator has to be inspected. We're at the mercy of the state inspector to do that. You say, well, why didn't you just call and schedule it six months ago? Well, once you call, they just come, sort of thing. At a certain period of time, there's very little direction on when they're coming. Obviously, we can ask for it ASAP, but we needed permanent power and a permanent phone line in there, as well as the fire alarm connection. The first two are done. The fire alarm connection's happening this week. You need all three, our general contractor is insisting on all three be done before they call for the inspection in the event something happens. We're pushing, just call and move the electrician over and wire it in if you have to, if they all of a sudden show up the same day, which we're not expecting. But obviously, if the elevator doesn't get inspected, we can't really ask the building inspector to give a certificate of occupancy, even though these departments really won't be using said device. The fourth is obviously the inspectors for the town will be going through the building on a regular basis. We have kind of a rolling schedule that starts as early as this week. To the extent they find anything, we're obviously going to get it right. We're not aware of anything, and we've actually gotten, I'd say the only compliment the general contractor's given throughout the process is how prudent the town officials have been in terms of walking through the building. I think an example I gave at a recent building committee meeting was Chief Achilles had noticed some things that he didn't think were up to code in terms of the fire alarm system. We walked the building with the building inspector, figured out what they were, the changes have already been implemented. The general contractor commented that that usually happens at the end, and then everyone's scrambling. So those are really the items that would preclude us from getting the certificate of occupancy, and it'll be temporary because the landscaping won't be done, on the 13th. Assuming the 13th happens, we're thinking of probably a rolling five to six days unless the chiefs have a different view in terms of their own operations or something that's not fully finished, to move into the building. In terms of the actual, like, first full day of operations, we're thinking it would probably be a good idea to have kind of just a small mini ribbon cutting, just to celebrate kind of the first day of operations from there, very short, sweet, not have the building open to the public that specific day, kind of do it out front, hopefully, hope for good weather, we could obviously move it into the apparatus bay, probably last resort, and then follow up with the October open house that we've talked about at prior meetings. That's the general update of what we have been dealing with. Obviously, there's a lot of detail that goes into every day. I feel like it changes every day. If you even go back to any that saw our meeting from last week, the concern last week on the August 13th date was the town's vendors. So the general contractor has their own schedule, but then we have to get all of the security system up and running, the dispatch system up and running, the building furnished, and there's a lot of other town vendors have to go through, including Tom from the IT department, they've got to get Wi-Fi, other things that have to happen. I got a schedule this afternoon that shows the town vendors are very clear of that 13th date, because we've been able to resolve an issue that we thought we were going to have in terms of being able to use the elevator for certain move-in of the furniture. All the furniture's here, ready to be delivered. They really would wish they could have pulled the moving trucks up a couple of weeks ago, to be honest with you. Dispatch is starting this week, but there is permanent power, there is permanent telephone to the building at this point, so we've come a long way. Any of you that have driven by the building can obviously see the first coat of pavement is down. I did receive a bunch of questions about the narrow driveways, and I caution people to wait for kind of further guidance, but I will just say it here publicly because I got the question a few times. The driveway on the far right is dedicated to emergency vehicles only, so there, someone was wondering how a fire truck could fit down the windy portion, which is the public access drive. The fire trucks actually have a direct, pretty direct route right out of their apparatus bay down the road, which is going to be dedicated. So you're going to start to see a lot of signage going up, but also we've reached out to SAM and are going to be working collaboratively with the schools, given that that will be a new traffic pattern, to deal with kind of preempting any potential issues. I can't guarantee there won't be mix-ups or people that don't follow the videos, but we're going to do our best as the committee to help facilitate videos and pictures and diagrams that can be widely disseminated, both through the school's resources, but also the town's resources as we get closer. So that's pretty much the substance of my update. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, I'm happy to answer them here.
Any questions, comments, concerns from the board? Ms. Braschio.
Just a, just a comment, Jason. I, once again, just want to commend the job that the building committee has done from, in such a short period of time, actually, if you think about when we actually started these discussions and this update. It's pretty amazing to see everything finally come together. I think it's very exciting for the taxpayers of the town. I think it's exciting for our public safety officials, but please relay our utmost thanks to a job very, very well done. I commend your leadership as well, Jason. I think you have run a very tight ship. You've watched the numbers, you've done a great job, and you've led your committee well. You had a great committee to start with, but with your guidance, I think they've really kind of put it through the end zone. So thank you again, and please relay my thanks to them as well.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Mr. Healy.
Appreciate the information. Hope the dates hold.
Thank you.
I echo Ms. Braschio's comments. A major accomplishment to get a project of this size through the process this smoothly. I've been involved with a lot of these over the years, and it's remarkable that you folks have done such a great job with the process. The townspeople are grateful and should greatly appreciate the strong effort and the great final product. Thank you.
I don't think you touched on it. If you did, I apologize, I missed it. Still considering, or have you finalized the date for a, date that you would have the facility open for the public?
Yes, I have it. Mrs. Hale drafted a save the date that we're planning to post, hopefully tomorrow. It's going to be Saturday, October 26th. We're going to leave the time open for now. We are meeting with the chiefs within the next week to kind of get their vision of how the day would go and what their departments, in terms of, I'll call it more like activities, they'd be putting on, whether the fire department's going to use that as their open house, I don't know. We haven't had that conversation yet, but the goal would be that it'd be open for an extended period of time, given that everyone has a thousand things going on, and the goal would be to get as many people through the building as possible.
Good, thanks for doing that. I know that a lot of people in town have interest in it, and they've been following your reports and your monthly updates as well, so everybody's going to be very anxious to, to see it. And it'd be good to have both departments in, operating in the facility.
Yeah, we're trying to give them some time to settle into. There's naturally going to be some kinks that occur. I think we're naive if we think that everything's going to work perfectly on day one. We were joking about just the startup of the HVAC on a 100-degree day in August, you know, we can just see that coming, right? So the good thing is we're 28 days away. The budget's still exactly where we want it, and we look forward to bringing you kind of a detailed update on that, hopefully, September timeframe, once we get all the final invoices in.
Sounds great. Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Appreciate you coming out. Move on now to reports. Town administrators' report.
Mr. Chairman, as, as Mr. Malinowski just said, we're 28 days out from the facility. One of the things he actually didn't mention is that the last time he was down there, he asked the clerk of the works if I do anything else besides come down and point things out and ask questions, and so I have been spending a lot of time down there lately. It's really been the focus. I think it's something that, you know, should have my focus at this point, just making sure that from a day-to-day perspective, that I can make sure the committee's got what they need and make sure that everything is, is on track. So that's really been where, you know, what I've been focusing on at this point, so that's the extent of what I have for report.
Thank you. Chair's report. Couple of items. First, based on the availability responses, our goal-setting meeting will be held on a day to be finalized during the week of August 19th, so if you folks could please keep that week open, we'll get a date finalized as soon as we can. And Mr. Purple, could I just ask you to distribute the similar information materials as you've done in the past to solicit ideas, so we can get those to you, so you can compile them and have those for discussion items for us?
Yes.
If you could distribute that, I'd appreciate it. Next, over the past couple of weeks, our board has received correspondence from Mr. First, noting a vacancy on the Assabett Regional School Committee due to Mr. Evers' resignation in late June. Paragraph D of the regional agreement states that if a vacancy occurs among the elected members of a town, the selectmen and the local school committee members from the member town involved acting jointly shall appoint a member to serve until the next annual town election, at which election a successor shall be elected to serve for the balance of the unexpired term, if any. So again, Mr. Purple, if I could ask you to reach out to Ms. Martin of the Southborough School Committee, so we could start to facilitate discussions and a meeting where we can discuss the process that we'd like to follow, to get that appointment done. In the meantime, if we could post the vacancy of this position on the town website, just to alert those in town who might be interested in filling the position, that there is a vacancy. The committee consists of members from each of the seven towns that make up the Assabett School Committee. The board has just reorganized, and again, there is a vacancy. Our appointment will be until the second Tuesday of next May. The current position was due to expire at that time anyways, so whoever is appointed, there would be an open election for the full four-year term in May of 2020, so. But again, if there are others here that people know of who might be interested in that position, feel free to reach out and, and offer their, their suggestions.
A question on that. Mr. Shea, is there, is a process laid out in the regional agreement for how it's done? Or is it just that, I guess, what does it say?
We'll just act jointly to appoint a member to serve, so.
Okay.
So we, we get together and we come up with a process.
We figure it out, okay.
And we figure it out.
All right.
So that is the process, and we will follow it fully. Lastly, and it's not my intent to have a discussion on it at this meeting, because I didn't include it as a discussion item, but there's also correspondence suggesting a change to our board's remote participation policy. Again, it's not my intent to take the matter up now. My ask is that each member take a look at the current policy and the suggested change that Mr. Hegarty has offered, and if members would like this discussed at an upcoming meeting, please reach out to Mr. Purple, let him know, and based on the responses, we will or will not include that as an item at an upcoming meeting. So if you could just, again, review what we have in place currently and what was suggested, and that's all that I have. Member reports?
Nothing for me.
I have a couple of things, please. I've heard recent concern expressed about the possibility of a noise bylaw in town, implementing one, and I would point out to the board that several years ago, I actually worked with Chief Paulus on such a bylaw, and looked around at a variety of other towns when I was on the advisory committee, other towns, and he reached out to his colleagues, police chiefs around the state, and got feedback on what kind of things work and don't work. And if the board is actually interested in doing that, there is a draft that is in relatively good shape that the chief has, that we could actually get something in place relatively quickly if we chose to do so. So I'd point that out to the board and.
Sounds like item number one on your.
Maybe talk about.
Suggested topics to include in the.
Possibly, possibly. Second point is, I have been attending some various meetings around town, and I had a chance to talk with our representative Carolyn Dykma recently, and one of the things that the EDC particularly is, is looking into, is there's a parcel of property off of Main Street behind the pizza parlor there that National Grid owns, and Representative Dykma said that, in fact, she's, I guess, on the House Utilities Committee or whatever, knows National Grid, and if we chose to ask her to help reach out to them to figure out if there's a way we could make a deal around that, she would be willing to help. So that's, again, something that I would ask that we talk about at some point here. Third, I've attended a couple of the CONCON meetings, where they have been working on finding a way to get access to property that they have responsibility for between Parkerville and Quarterville Road, just north of the Pike, referred to as the Halloran Property. And there are actually two parcels there that are relatively landlocked, and they're difficult to get access to. CONCON would like to find a way to do that. It turns out that there is Mass Pike Right-of-Way that would allow access, and it's very strangely shaped right-of-way, because it, it sort of bumps out in a place that blocks access for reasons that aren't clear if you look at the map. And so CONCON is interested in finding a way to approach Mass DOT and, and see if there's a way to get an easement or access through there, and Representative Dykma said that she would be happy to approach Mass DOT on our behalf if we chose to ask her to do that, so I would ask for a conversation around the possibility of that to help get access there. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to consent, sorry, consent agenda. Are there items that members would like to hold for discussion? Ms. Braschio.
Yeah, I would like to hold item B in item I, just for comment.
And I have a question about item D.
With that, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, C, E, F, G, H, J, and K?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item B, accept resignation of Frederica Gillespie from Community Preservation Committee. Ms. Braschio.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment, and actually, I just wanted to thank Ms. Gillespie for all of the time and energy she's put on to the CPC Committee while she was as chair, as well as on the committee itself. She's put a tremendous amount of energy, time, and hard work into this, that Town Meeting has trusted her. When items come before Town Meeting, I would just like to have this board publicly thank her for all of the hard work she's done, and wish her well on, you know, the balance over boards and committees.
I certainly second that.
Yeah, thank you for those comments.
And if, I agree with that completely. I took a look at the, that committee's composition, and one of the things I did to look for that was to look back at their reports, and on the website, the most recent report was from 2015, and I'm just wondering through the chair if we can ask for the, the most updated report from the community preservation. For instance, just, I'd like to know how much money they have. I mean, there's important projects coming up that are under consideration, and that up-to-date information, I think folks would want to see it, I'd really like to see it as well.
Okay. Very good. So with that, is there a motion on item D?
I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Frederica Gillespie from the Community Preservation Committee.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Item B.
Sorry.
I think I said D, but it should be item B. Sorry. So you, you read it correctly, I was incorrect. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item D, Mr. Stivers.
I was at the transfer station on Saturday and got questions from a couple of people about this in terms of potential conflict here, and I see in our packet, and I've tried to explain to people, that that appears to be a very arms-length process. Former Selectman Rooney and current advisory chair, or member Rooney, obviously, as I understand it, this is Mr. Rooney's daughter, and people have asked me, is there any issue in terms of conflict of interest relative to state ethics requirements or whatever? I'm assuming that's not the case, but I'm curious to know if we actually checked that, and if we did, it would be great to have that knowledge out there in the public. And I see from the packet that the process was apparently an arms-length process where the job was posted, people were interviewed, and this young lady was selected as the best candidate for the job, which is the way it should happen. So the question I'd like to be able to answer for folks, did anybody look at the conflict potential there?
Yeah, I mean, advisory committee was not involved in that.
Right.
In this process.
Although in theory, they, they have opinions on town, on town budget items for rec commission as well as everybody else, so.
Mr. Healy.
I ran an ethics commission for eight years.
Yes.
And the way it works, and I suspect, I see Mr. Rooney sitting back there, who's also an attorney, if anything comes up with respect to his daughter, he files conflict of interest forms, he recuses.
May refuse.
And he follows the, the rules of the ethics commission. I suspect, knowing him, that that procedure will be followed to the T, but in terms of the hiring process, advisory had nothing to do with it, and so there's not an issue at all.
Okay, thank you. I will explain that to people then. Thank you.
And actually, just, Mr. Purple, I guess if you could just speak to the process that was followed with this.
Thank you. I was hoping you would ad lib for a second.
Okay. You can go to Ms. Braschio if you prefer.
You can do that.
Okay, I just, I just have a, a comment. I think whether, there's a question, and it's always a question, we have no control over advisory that's appointed by the moderator, so any concerns or questions of conflict, I would think, should go through the moderator. As far as this appointment, this appointment has nothing to do with the conflict of a person on another board or committee. I think that Ms. Rooney's appointment should stand on its own, based on the process that was followed and her qualifications.
Exactly. There was a process followed, she rose to the top in the process, and she deserves the appointment, in my opinion, and as to the process that was followed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll do it from memory. So we had a total of 111 candidates for this position. That included the candidates received. So we had a total of 111 candidates for this position, that included the candidates received from Indeed advertisement, as well as received through the portal that we use for applicant tracking. I will make my comment with regards to Indeed. You know, you put, you put your interest out there for a keyword, and it hits, and we get all these resumes, and, you know, out of Indeed, maybe out of 100, you know, 100 resumes or 80, 90 resumes, you maybe only get 15, you know, that may have some validity, some consideration. From that grouping, there were eight candidates that were interviewed for first round, there were four candidates that were brought back. I don't want to out him, but our new Rec Director shortly, not yet, is, he's beginning next week. Mr. Davis was good enough to participate in the final interviews with me, because, again, this is the person who is going to, you know, help him succeed, so it was, you know, very much, he was involved in the choice, and, you know, the choice was Ms. Rooney. I think that she gives the department the best chance to succeed, along with Mr. Davis. So, again, Ms. Hanson is here, the Chair of Rec Commission. Rec Commissioners, you know, we tried to make sure they were involved in the process as well. Again, you know, kudos to Ms. Hale, you know, she puts together our processes, she, you know, keeps everybody in line, keeps us to the task, and so I appreciate her efforts. Again, you know, another very clean process, which gave us, at the end of the day, the best candidate for the position.
Thanks. That gives me the answer that I was looking for. Thank you.
And with that, I will move that we appoint Alexandra Rooney as Recreation Full-Time Program Coordinator.
Second.
Moved, seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Lastly, item I, Ms. Braschio.
Okay. The approval of the conservation restriction. I just wanted to take a second and to, again, thank all of the departments, committees, and boards that were involved in this process. The Conservation Restriction Committee did an amazing job with bringing forward a first draft. The Conservation Committee itself did another amazing job on getting this through, through SVT, through Town Council, through, Mr. Purple was involved in the process. I know I'm leaving people out, but I just want to share our gratitude for everybody that followed the will of Town Meeting, that wanted to see this restriction done, and it was important to them, and so, again, thank you to everybody that made this possible. And I'll leave it at that.
And if you had not held this, I was going to hold this item myself to...
I figured you probably would.
Echo those similar comments. You know, it was unanimous that everybody wanted to get this done, and, you know, while there may have been, you know, some discussions and maybe differences of opinions as to how things would play out along the way, and I think everybody's very, very happy with the finished product. I know I am, and just very appreciative of the CR Committee and all the efforts that they put in to this.
Good coordinated effort, great result. Thank you.
And I will just say, I mean, I went through the, I suspect other folks did as well, but I went through the conservation restriction, which is...
Pretty intense.
Lengthy, yes.
Which is lengthy. I went through it in an awful lot of detail, and if folks haven't, they can rest assured that both the protection for passive recreation and the protection for the golf course, which are the two most important things, are in great detail and with a great deal of protection included in there. So, again, the kudos, and it's a terrific product.
Mr. Purple.
Mr. Chairman, just two, just a few items of note. The CR has been approved and signed off on by Sudbury Valley Trustees, also was approved and signed off on July 11th by the Conservation Commission, so the primary and secondary holder, and I do want to publicly thank Melissa Danza, the Conservation Administrator. She's new to town, but she is not new to these processes, she's not new to conservation issues, and she did a great job helping to bring this across the finish line. I do want to point out, it's interesting, Melissa recently became a notary, and she got her stamp the other day, and she was extremely excited that the first time she used her stamp was to certify the Conservation Commission signatures on the CR. So I thought that was, that was something neat to point out. So kudos to her for helping to, you know, the rest of the groups and everything coordinating, keeping us in track and getting us across the finish line.
Excellent.
With the Chair's indulgence?
Yes.
I meant to, we jumped, we already approved it, which is fine, but item F, which is the contract for the Ashland MWRA water connection, I didn't know what that was. Obviously, some folks were members of the board when it happened, and I just want to comment that however it came about, it's a great deal for Southborough. I love that, you know, 1.2 or 1.4, whatever it is, million dollars, are being spent to improve our water facilities by the town of Ashland. So, location, 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 we're in a good spot, and that's a terrific benefit to the town.
So this was, this was something that I actually was involved in the infancy when I was on the other side of the fence, and talking about trying to establish a permanent, you know, sustainable water solution for Ashland should their wells, you know, because the wells are very susceptible to rainfall. You know, you don't get a lot of rain, the reservoir levels sink to a certain level, they can't use the wells. So Ashland kept having these issues, they needed to find something sustainable. Southborough was willing to do that. As you pointed out, at the same time, we're able to get some capital improvements out of this that we would have had to pay for otherwise, that are being paid for by Ashland. So not only are we being a good neighbor, but we're also getting some benefit out of that relationship as well.
It's a great result, and I didn't know about it, so I figured there were a lot of people out there who might be watching who didn't know about it, and as I said, I was remiss in not commenting earlier, so thank you.
And Marty, one other interesting tidbit here is it turns out that the demand cycles are actually ideal for us in the sense that when Ashland needs the water, is when we don't need it. So in the fall, when they recharge their aquifer, that's when they need the water. That's off-cycle for our need in the summertime, when we're pulling on the water. So it's a very nice fit there in terms of demand for water without affecting water delivery, water pressures, and so forth in either town adversely. So it's a great example of collaboration and cooperation and financial gain.
And with all that said, is there a motion to approve the conservation restriction for the Southborough Golf Course?
So I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Other matters properly before the board, approve Eagle Scout project for Finn School Field on behalf of Colin Carrigan. Ms. Braschio?
Thank you. I had the pleasure, unfortunately, Mr. Carrigan could not be here tonight, and based on the time constraints for the Eagle Scout program, I was able to sit down with him, ask him some questions, get some information. There is his application that was submitted through the Knox Council, I don't want to screw that up for him, through the, who handles the Eagle Scouts, so I don't want to screw that up or speak out of turn. But I did speak to him a little bit about the project itself. He is not purchasing the scoreboard. His main goal and job is to install the scoreboard. The scoreboard is roughly 12 feet long. He will need to get a permit. He has spoken to the building inspector. He needs approval from us before he can move forward to that next step. There's also a three-foot platform, it's a manual scoreboard, so that's why there's a three-foot platform as well. He has spoken with the building inspector, so in order for him to get a permit, he has spoken with the Conservation Commission, and I believe the Chair now, congratulations, by the way, Ms. Hanson, Recreation, sorry, is here, and the Little League, the Little League has purchased the scoreboard, and they're going to handle, I don't know per se, if Planning Board needs to be involved, I believe, Ms. Hanson, you had those questions as well. They, he's calling DigSafe before he digs, he's digging down, I think it's roughly 12 feet, I want to say. He's working on fundraising for it, but the Little League has been very receptive to wanting to get this done, so they have even offered to help him in spearheading the fundraising. He can fundraise, they'll kind of foot the bill for it, so he can move forward on his project, and it's going in the outfield. I think the placement changed a little bit, so if Ms. Hanson can take just a couple minutes, if the Chair will allow, they have met with him as well, and I know she was receptive to the changes that I wasn't.
Okay, please, Ms. Hanson.
Welcome.
If you could, when you talk about it, my kids are 15 years removed from playing there, which is field one? Where is the scoreboard going?
Yes, I actually had to look it up to make sure I was talking about the right field. So Finn 1 is the field, when you're at the parking lot and you, like you, you have the school parking lot, and then you have like the baseball parking lot, Finn 1 is tucked right in the corner between the two parking lots, between the drive-up to drop off your kids, and then there's Mooney, which has the, like, the announcer stand, and then the far end is another field, so Finn 1 is tucked right in the corner there. So, yeah, so Colin came to our Recreation Meeting last week to show us what he wanted to do and talk to us about it, and he presented that he'd like the scoreboard to go, when you're looking at Finn 1 field, out past third base, there's a break in the fence, he wanted to go to six feet to the right of the fence. When we pulled up an aerial map of that, we showed him how the Recreation Commission had concerns that that actually would be hitting the corner of our soccer field, so on like Google Maps, you can actually see our soccer field lines on the field, and we had concerns that where he was planning would actually interfere with a corner kick of that 9v9 field that we have there, or 11v11 field we have there. So what we proposed to him and suggested that instead, if he could move it so it's directly behind second base, so it would, there's, there's space between the backside of Finn 1 and Mooney Field, there's like a triangular section of field that has a little more space, it's further away from the soccer field lines, and still would achieve what he's looking for, so we asked him to consider that position instead. So the Recreation Commission suggested that he, again, go back to the building inspector to see if that would be okay, but also we recommended checking in with Planning Board, because we also have lights going in at Mooney, and we wanted to make sure that where he's planning to put this now won't interfere with the lights that we have going in.
So it would be out behind the fence in center field?
Correct. Yeah, directly behind second plate.
Got it.
Second base.
And just to add again, that he can't move further in the process with the building inspector and getting the permit until we allow him and give him the right to move forward. So that's basically why he was going to come before the board, to see if there was support for him to move forward with this project. And placement and all of that between Planning Board and the building inspector, they'll get it where it needs to be, and he will just be installing it, per code.
So Rec supports, baseball supports?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved, seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Again, congratulations.
Last item, signage for John Wilson Drive.
So, Mr. Chairman, in your packet this evening, you have a rendering that Ms. Galligan has worked with, the vendor that she works with, for signage, for a sign for John Wilson Drive. This is going to identify the access road, basically from Public Safety back into the new golf parking lot. This was something that the board had already previously approved, but, again, before we move forward, I wanted to get the board's assent or any comments and everything on the sign. The, there is some significance to the color of the sign. I know that one comment may be that, well, everything else is black and white, you know, why, why is this, you know, but we thought that, given that John's love of Algonquin, we thought that the Algonquin red would be meaningful, plus it looks nice with the gold ball. So that's, this is for your consideration. Again, this is something that probably, you know, is going to take, you know, a couple of, probably, I wouldn't say two months, but probably six weeks to put together. I think it's something that, obviously, when it is ready and is installed and is to be dedicated, we should make sure that it is done separate and distinct from the Public Safety Facility, because it is two separate, distinct things, and you would like to make sure that this actual unveiling and everything in that has its own, has its own ceremony. So if there's, you know, I don't necessarily need a board vote, you know, head shakes will do, but if there are any comments or anything in that, you know, I can take those back and put that into a final design, but I want to bring it to the board first for thoughts.
Mr. Healy.
Yeah, the one thing I would say, I mean, it looks great. It looks great, and, and, obviously, I mean, John was a, he was an avid everything. Everything he did, he was avid. And the one thing I would say is, it's kind of funny people are with names. I think he uses a middle initial or a middle name. I think John did, and I would check to make sure.
Okay.
I mean, it's one of those things.
Yep.
You know, again, I always use my middle initial when it's something formal.
Yep.
And I'd check with his wife Sheila and make sure that we're, we're not getting it exactly as he would have wanted it.
Good point. Ms. Braschio?
I would just like to add, I think that this is very fitting, fitting for golf. I think it's a great leeway in, it's the first thing people will see as they go in. I think it's a great sign, and I think it's a fitting tribute to John as well. I think it was beautifully done, so, thank you.
One small question in terms of detail. I've never played golf with John, but this is a right-handed golfer, so is he right-handed or left-handed? If he's left, it ought to be flipped, maybe, I don't know.
I'm 99% sure he was a right-handed golfer.
Statistically, he probably is, but might not be, just to verify.
Maybe he should have been a left-handed golfer, but I think he was a right-handed golfer.
I would do better left-handed, but, all right.
His shot may indicate otherwise, is what you're saying, or, okay.
Respectfully, I say.
Mark, who did the design?
I would have to, I was, you know, I was going back through my emails quickly, and I haven't come up, oh, nope, I did find it. Pillsbury Sign Company.
Okay. No, they get, I mean, they're very, it's, I think he is right-handed, but it's, it's very nicely done, so kudos.
I will check on the, I will check on the middle initial, though, that is a, probably a very good catch, so, okay.
I think it's H, but I don't know if he uses it.
Yep.
You know, it's funny, some folks use it, some folks don't, and, and it might seem, his family might see it without the middle initial, and it just, it doesn't look, it doesn't look right.
Yep.
So, obviously, we should absolutely get it right.
It was in his email address, so.
Yep. Okay.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.